Good evening. Ally, will you take the roll, please?
Councilmember Debbie Burtland.
Here.
Councilmember Jane Brom.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Searle.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Grady.
Councilmember Tonason.
Here.
Mayor Bruce Bassett. Deputy Mayor Dan Gross.
Here. So, welcome to the March 18th, 2013, meeting of the City Council. I'm acting as in charge of the meeting tonight because the mayor is not here. Also, Councilmember Grady will not be attending tonight's meeting due to a death in his family. So, we're going right to appearances. Just to remind everybody on the rules of appearances, this time is set aside for members of the audience to speak to the City Council about any issue. Traditionally, the Council does not respond to comments made at the meeting, but will follow up or have staff follow up with the speaker if needed. Each speaker is given three minutes to address the Council. Please step up to the podium, state your name and address for the record. The yellow light will flash when you have 30 seconds left, and the red light will flash when your three minutes are up. We ask that you address your comments to the entire Council and not to individual Council members, staff members, or the audience. We also ask that you refrain from applause or disapproval of any comments by any individual. Any person who makes personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks, or who becomes boisterous, threatening, or personally abusive while addressing the Council may be requested to leave the meeting. So, with that, if there are anyone who would like to speak to the Council, this is the
7438 Southeast 27th. I've spoken on the Legacy Project. I'm here to give the Council some good news on behalf of Deve Calvert. Today, she signed a lease in the Walgreens site, and so the question about are we going to keep the true value? We had helped her look for a couple of other sites. They're difficult to find, as you all know, but our other option was to go to Newcastle, so we're happy for that. And with the Council's permission, I'd like to do a little tribute to someone. I had a great time working for Mercer Island for five years, I-90 downtown, and I didn't think I'd leave, but I got a knock on the door from an engineer that was working for two or three large landowners. One was Laird Norton Company, and about two months later, I left to do that and set up my office in downtown Seattle. A month later, I realized I was working for Booth Gardner. Had that chance to work for him for a number of years, and then had one of his first fundraisers, his first fundraiser the second time around at my house with Governor Rosalini. You get a chance sometime. Last time, I commented on how much I appreciate you doing, the work you do and how hard it is. I think we all took a book, a page out of Booth's book. He was a consummate gentleman, and Ron Dotso was right. I remember the campaign. He wouldn't ask for money. But just having a fundraiser at his house and having friends, he was there like your next-door neighbor, just the most genuine guy, and really gave credit to a lot of people. He was good at picking good staff members, like the city of Mercer Island does. And so, I'd just like to take 15 seconds and everybody send a little prayer his way and remember him as probably one of our finest leaders the state's had. So, thank you for the opportunity today.
Thank you very much, Bob. And I totally concur with your comments regarding the former governor and always a gentleman, always a great community leader and great state leader, so someone that we will definitely miss in our state. And also, thank you for your comments regarding the true value. I'm sure that with members of this Council, the members of the public, that's great news to hear. Senator?
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, my name is Jim Horn, and I have lived at 9507 Southeast 61st Place for the last 45 years. I wanted to take this opportunity to thank Deputy Mayor Dan Gross for the kind comments he made about my role, along with the 1976 Mercer Island City Council in negotiating a memorandum of agreement that we had an important role that's had played for access of our citizens. But I want to correct a misperception that we may have had a Plan B or what have you. The issue was simply too important for us to have a Plan B, too important for our citizens. We concentrated all our efforts about how to win. We couldn't afford to think how to lose or what kind of parking garage or booty that we might have to give up the access of our citizens to Mercer Island. And you know, in the end, has it started with 20 lanes of traffic coming into East Channel over there, and I-90 coming across the downtown city, downtown city, 40 feet in the air through prime neighborhood with no access for our citizens, no access or address for our citizens? So, we took a very strong position that we simply cannot tolerate that for our citizens out here. And in the end, we said we need to have it on the ground, need not have 20 lanes coming in the east side, and by the way, we don't want to see it, hear it, or smell it when you put it on the ground. And so, as you know, we got a lot of amenities. We got the trench, we got trees on top, playgrounds and trees on top, widened passes going over the area, and even the boat launch on the east channel. But Mercer Island has a lot of clout when the issues are framed deftly and skillfully. Mercer Island will have no cloud and even a headwind if we allow these issues to be framed in the wrong manner. So, it's very, very important that we frame these issues properly and skillfully, and I would encourage you to do that. We can't afford to have people think that Mercer Island is being special people, getting a special attention, or something that other people do not get, that we indeed have to be working for the good of the region. Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Mark Williams. I'm a resident at 8845 Southeast 61st Street, Mercer Island. I'm here on behalf of my wife, who is unable to come tonight, but she wants her voice to be heard. She, for the first time in her life, decided to go to a meeting this weekend up at Newcastle for the town hall and was somewhat frustrated in that she didn't get a chance to speak. So, I have a prepared statement from her, and I think she also emailed most of you on the board. It goes like this. "Hello from Cary York, lifelong Mercer Island resident and small business owner on Mercer Island. I was disappointed that there was very little discussion about I-90 tolling at the recent town hall meeting in Newcastle. I do not want you to think Mercer Islanders are giving up on the tolling issue. Tolling to reach Mercer Island greatly affects my business and other businesses, therefore affecting the city of Mercer Island greatly. If there are tolls to come to Mercer Island, I will lose business, and that will therefore affect other components. I am a dentist on Mercer Island, a small business owner. I have 11 employees, 10 of whom come from off-island to work at my business. Tolling to come to work would have a significant impact on them, as the Mercer Island School District has also presented for their employees, and they must not be able to work for me if told to come to work. Next, my clients, patients, will be less likely to come to Mercer Island to see me if told, which not only reduces my business, but also those businesses around me, as my patients often go to lunch after the appointment, or to go have coffee, or to the grocery store. If my revenues go down due to fewer patients coming to me, my taxes also are reduced for the city and the state. My employees are very, very concerned about the tolling issue. I hear them talking about it in the office now and then, and how tolling would greatly impact their lives, income, and decisions. I know I am not the only small business owner on the island with these concerns. I write to encourage you to consider other options and not to toll those coming to Mercer Island. Then, of course, tolling also impacts my family and our life and our comings and goings, including my children and their Mercer Island School District teachers. But I wanted to write as a business owner. I envision our island becoming a little ghost town, where very few people want to come and do business or work. Tolls make that prohibitive. Thank you, Cary York Williams. Mom as Cary Williams, owner as Dr. Cary York." Thank you.
Thanks very much. Tom, I believe you're next.
Tom Hemrick, 6231 Allen Crest Way. First of all, thank you for the redirection and moving toward the tolling matter. At least, I think we're moving in the right direction on that issue, and recognizing the danger and the threat to the interstate highway system, and finally recognizing the importance to work this at the federal level. I think that's good. Tonight, though, I'd like to at least make a few comments about Agenda Bill 4815 on Legacy Residential Development, because I'm concerned that the Council, once again, is potentially making some serious policy errors in approving this development without some further thought and potential mitigation. With two decades or more of flawed zoning and development policy, this development can represent a pretty serious threat, I believe, to the island for the long term in the way it potentially can drive businesses off the island and cause all kinds of other difficulty. The source of the problem is seriously flawed zoning and development policy to start with. This development doesn't come close to paying fully allocated cost to the community for taxes, streets, schools, fire services, parking, or emergency preparedness. And the assessments claimed for things like traffic impacted $10,000 that I've heard of the school district reported $90,000 are ridiculously low. They're probably one to three orders of magnitude off what the real costs are. And so, we have to recognize that. Otherwise, we're going to keep driving businesses off the island, like Lakeside Drug that we've lost, the Lumber Yard, the toll and rental place that we've lost because of the way that rents go. So, the bottom line is that I believe that the Council shouldn't approve this project for that serious major reconsideration of our long-term zoning and real impacts to make sure that those tax consequences are understood and that the community doesn't end up picking up the slack for basically short-sighted policies that are addressed at the micro level as opposed to the macro level. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tom.
Hi, I'm Susan Madison, 7075 Southeast Maker Street. I'm here today to ask the Council, your constituents, and residents to consider to make a tax-deductible donation to the Mercer Island nonprofit Island Vision on behalf of their project to build the Mercer Island Community Center solar array. As you remember, the city of Mercer Island cooperated with PSC to increase the number of Green Power subscribers on Mercer Island. And as a result of that effort, we met our goal, and PSC granted Mercer Island a $30,000 grant to be used specifically for solar electric modules or panels to go on the community center grounds. And I was part of a team that took a look at how we could use that money as seed money to build an even larger array here on the island, very similar to what we saw being done on Bainbridge Island, Whitby Island, Bashan Island, Edmonds, Olympia, and many other cities throughout the state. So, today, we're asking Mercer Island residents to donate towards our first renewable energy asset on the island. And what this is, it's a solar installation that will contribute to the operation cost of the community center. So, that electricity will go straight to the community center, and that is ultimately going to lower the operating cost of the community center for years to come. It also is a demonstration project for our schools and for our families to understand that solar electric can work on this island. It also, by participating now, we can take advantage of a production energy credit or rebate that is offered by the state until 2020, that is going to help pay for our operating and maintenance costs for the array, as well as potentially expand the array over time. Finally, it's a tax deduction that you can give that is going to deliver for years on and years on, because this solar array will continue to deliver electricity. There's several Mercer Island organizations that have been involved in this. Of course, the city has been involved, along with the Green Ribbon Commission, the Transition Initiative Mercer Island, Island Vision, and the Mercer Island Solar Guild. So, we're asking the public to donate similarly to the way that we've put together our parks throughout the city of Mercer Island, where potentially there's city money, and then there's interested donors that want to contribute to make this project even better. So, in our case, we're hoping to fund a 10-kilowatt array at least, which will involve an additional $40,000 worth of donations over the next month, because we'd like to finalize this effort by April 15. So, please send your donations by April 15, and I'd like to pass out a flyer around the room and to the Council to describe more about the project. Thank you.
You can, I'd rather you just, why don't you just leave it at the beginning of the rows instead of just...
Okay.
That would be good. Thanks, Susan.
Thank you. I went to a couple of the open houses this weekend with our three state representatives, Representative Cliburn, Representative Maxwell, and Senator Litzel. And I want to thank the three councilmembers who also went. Councilmember Searle, who went to both, Newcastle and Samamish, and Councilmember San and Burtland, who went to the one in Samamish. It was interesting, because although a lot of people were interested in I-90 tolling, most of the questions were directed at education. So, I'd like to make three points here. First, I'd like to ask the Council to invite our three representatives to have an open house on Mercer Island that would have time to focus on I-90 tolling, and some on education. It's interesting that the Mercer Island School District, in their submission to the state, talked about how much of a negative impact tolling will have on our schools. So, I think the two ought to be combined here. Second, Representative Cliburn said at one of these meetings that her bill, 1945, would not pass, would not even come to the floor for a vote, that she would put a proviso into the budget to require the State Department of Transportation to take a look at some of the impacts of tolling. I think this would be a time for the Mercer Island Council to ask her to put in the proviso, a request for WASHDOT to look at the full impacts of tolling to the whole region and a full analysis of alternatives. She said at the Samamish Town Meeting that they had no Plan B. In other words, they had not looked at alternatives. The third thing that I would like the Council to do in light of this is to encourage the Council to adopt a resolution that we could take to other cities in the region, to ask them to also join us in seeking a full environmental impact statement with all of the impacts and all the alternatives. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Is there anyone else? That will close appearances and move to the consent calendar. Any, Mike, you want to pull anything off the consent calendar?
No, I think...
Oh, minutes? I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm doing it, Bruce. First thing is minutes from the revised planning session, or the revised 2013 planning session minutes, January 11th through 13th, 2013.
I move approval for the minutes of the annual planning session, January 11th through 13th, 2013.
Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Now to the consent calendar. Anyone want to pull anything off the consent calendar? Otherwise, I entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Approve the consent calendar.
Second?
Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Turn to regular business. Agenda Bill 4818, I-90 tolling work plan, status report. Deputy City Manager. And by the way, I've told Noel that I want him to be able to finish his entire report before we have any questions or discussions.
Good evening, Noel Treat, Deputy City Manager. Here's the agenda from our report tonight. First, I'm going to give you a status report on the work that's underway under the work plan that you approved. I'm going to give you a budget update to let you know where we stand in terms of the appropriation that you made last month, and then we'll wrap it up with questions and some discussion. On the status report, first on the WASHDOT EA process, as you know, part of our efforts are to advocate our position in that process. We're seeking meetings now with the Governor's Office and the new secretary, and we're hopeful that we're going to have something lined up on both those fronts in the coming weeks. WASHDOT is preparing a survey that they're going to send to every Mercer Island address, they tell us. They are going to be sending us draft questions. We hope to see those at the end of the week to provide some input, and then they will then be sending those out. I will be sure to get an email out to our distribution list to let people know when that survey is coming, so that we're sure that we have good participation. In speaking with WASHDOT today, it sounds like they're still trying to figure out when they're going to make decisions about whether to do an EA or to move to an EIS. They hope to make that decision, they tell me, towards the end of the month or early next month. And then, the executive advisory group that will be convened as part of that process, we're still waiting to hear what's going to happen with that and when it's going to be scheduled. Litigation strategy, that was, as you recall, when we adopted the work plan at the last meeting, we added some new provisions about working to develop a litigation strategy. I'm pleased to report that we've retained the firm of CalFO, Harrigan Lay, and Eats. They're one of the region's best litigation firms, so they are there for us should we need them. And then, we're going to continue to monitor the Portsmouth litigation, see where that goes, see what the issues are, see if it's appealed. It's in lower court right now. State legislature outreach continues. Our lobbyist is doing some of the first work that we asked, which was to get a better sense of whether the legislature really is likely to approve tolling, as we've been told. So, that work is underway. We're also continuing to monitor for other opportunities for alternative sources of funding for the 520 project, so the tolling may not be necessary. But a lot of what we're hearing right now is that the legislature's not really willing to look at other items until they first tackle the education funding problem that they're facing. So, transportation funding right now is sort of stalled. On the federal front, I think, as everyone knows, we filed a letter with the Federal Highways Administration last week stating our opposition to tolling of I-90. Our legal counsel is continuing their legal review of issues related to federal approval, so there'll be more to come on that as we wrap up that analysis. We have a pending public records request with WASHDOT for all their documents related to seeking federal approval. I'm still waiting on a firm timeline as to when we can expect to see those documents. And then, finally, we've retained a federal lobbying firm, Monument Policy Group, Tim Punk, who's actually an island resident, is one of the partners there, and he's going to help lead our efforts to reach out to our delegation and other members of Congress as we move ahead. We are also beginning some stakeholder outreach and talking with cities, the port, Sound Cities Association, businesses and others to build support for our position. And then, finally, we're continuing public information. We've sent out our fifth email update. Our distribution list continues to grow as people contact us and ask to be added. We are doing our best to keep our webpage updated, and we'll continue to do that. And we're working towards scheduling some additional community discussions with council members and the public. Budget. Unfortunately, a lot of the work we have to do involves legal counsel and lobbyists, and those can be expensive, as you all know. So, this is a report sort of on where we are in terms of cost to date. And let me walk you through this. First of all, legal counsel on the NEPA front, we're at about $57,000, which includes all the work on the scoping letter, advice they've provided us on different parts of strategy, and a variety of different legal questions and issues that have come up as part of that NEPA process. As you know, we've also engaged legal counsel in Washington, D.C., to look at the question of federal approval of tolling. The total cost for that's going to be about $30,000. That will get them through their complete analysis, which isn't done yet. We anticipate that'll take another few weeks, as well as some outreach to federal highways directly to advocate our position and to get additional information. As I mentioned, we've retained litigation counsel. There was a retention fee involved of $5,000. Our state lobbying, government affairs, communications help that we're getting is $22,000, and that'll get us through about May. We'll see if the session is wrapped up then or not. And then, finally, the federal lobbying is $10,000 for the rest of the year. So, that gets us up right now to a total of $124,000. As you recall, a couple of meetings ago, you appropriated $150,000, so we've got just a little bit of room left. And as I stated, when you made the appropriation, of course, if or when we need additional funds, as things move forward, we'll come back to Council for a full discussion about budget and what's needed. And in terms of future costs, here's just a few that we know of that will be coming our way. First is, we know that the NEPA and federal highway administration issues are going to be ongoing over the course of the next year or more, and so, we're working on trying to identify what might the budget look like for that body of work. Traffic expert, we're beginning to get some proposals in from firms we've reached out to, and that's probably going to be in the range of $25,000 if we're only having them help us review WASHDOT's analysis. If we decide that we want our own full analysis, it might be many more times that amount. And then, finally, we've also reached out to some economic impact experts and are waiting for proposals from them to get a cost on what it would take to get someone to help us review WASHDOT's economic analysis when the time comes. So, obviously, more to come on budget as we move ahead. And that's my report.
Are there any questions or comments from the Council?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Will you go back to the second slide? Or what's the first slide? Yeah, go. Where's the... Okay, so, they're trying to get the 1945 as a proviso. Are we also doing that with the EIS, trying to get them to, when I say "them," Representative Cliburn, to not only do that, which is kind of an already-done deal, but the issue is the EIS? Are we exploring the strategy of getting the EIS on the proviso?
We have looked at that. As you might remember, when that bill was first introduced, we went down, we testified in favor of doing an EIS instead. And also, our lobbyist is talking with her staff about, would you consider an EIS now? Based on the feedback we got at that point, I'm not sure how much traction we'll get with that, but it is something certainly to continue to advocate for. And also, as I mentioned, that's the purpose of trying to meet with the Governor's Office as well, because that's a place where if the Governor were more willing to think that the EIS is the way to go, he could direct WASHDOT that direction.
Right, that's one strategy, getting it right to the government. But the other strategy that I'm suggesting that we adopt and really push is getting the legislature. Hopefully, that would be with cooperation with our representative, but specifically get the EIS, and then we push for the EIS as a proviso to the finance bill. So, Mr. Mayor and the Steering Committee, the I-90 Steering Committee, I'd appreciate if you would, amongst yourselves, talk about that, the logic in getting...
Yeah, and Mike, we can definitely talk about it. Obviously, from a legal standpoint, the decision on whether to do an EIS in the first instance is an administrative decision. It's generally not a legislative decision, so...
Well, actually, I tend to disagree with that. I don't think it's obviously that. I think it's obvious...
You know, it's...
I think it's obvious, it's, it's dictated over and over, it's been told to us that the legislature, the legislature dictates to Wash Dot what they're gonna do. I've heard that over and over, that the legislature dictated to Wash Dot that they'll do an EA. Therefore, the legislature can dictate to the Wash Dot that they do an EIS. So I, I would like to see that as, as it adopted, uh, certainly the, the Steering Committee consider doing that.
Sure, and we can take that up at our next Steering Committee meeting. I, I just, I don't think that's an accurate statement of the law, but that's, we'll discuss it, um, among the Steering Committee.
Okay.
On, on the issue of EIS though, there is, um, before the council, I think you all have a copy of a draft resolution, um, that, if you're wondering what that is, um, for those who haven't seen it before, I know Mike has seen it before and Debbie has seen it. This was something that actually was prepared by Noel at Mike's request or Mike and Bruce's request. Um, and it was, the, the resolution goes the question of, well, just, let me read the, the penultimate line for those who don't have copies of it. Um, be resolved as follows, prior to tolling any additional individual highways in the central Puget Sound region, the state of Washington should conduct a system-wide environmental impact statement of all potential tolling projects to ensure that impacts and traffic diversion are fully considered in a holistic and systematic manner. And, um, so, I'm, I'm not suggesting that the council approve this resolution tonight, but, um, Councilmember Siro has made the observation that when, when he and the rest of us are talking with other communities and we go to them and say, well, what would you, and they say to us, well, what would you like us to do? Um, that we need to have something we can show them from a tangible standpoint as to what, what the ask is, so to speak. Um, the, the mayor has made it clear in, in discussions with staff that he doesn't think we should pass this resolution in its current form, but the question before the council is whether, without necessarily passing it, whether we believe that this is a, is sufficient as a talking point, so that when Mike or any of us go and talk to people, we say, that this is a direction we are heading and we would appreciate your input as regional partners on this as an approach to, that we can make to the legislature. So, instead of us passing a resolution saying, this is it and this is what we want you, our hopeful regional partners, to do, instead saying, this is what we're currently thinking and we would welcome your comments on this and so we could eventually end up with a, a regional resolution that we could all pass, um, together. And it relates to the EIS issue. So I, I raise it, um, Mike had, had mentioned to me earlier today and, and so I got a copy from, from Noel this afternoon and Debbie's had a chance to see it during the Steering Committee meeting. Um, what, what I would suggest is if, if the council is satisfied with this as a talking points resolution, that we just, um, basically give thumbs up to, to doing that and, um, and be understood that this is a talking points and talking points resolution that we can then modify based upon input from other regional players.
What's the mechanism then? How would we do this? I mean, right now, but yes, resuming that we agree to, um, take this to other groups?
I mean, Mike, like if you were talking to the, someone on the city council in Issaquah, just to say that, you know, this is, this is what our council is a working document that we have and we're going around to other locales and seeing whether this is something they could support or whether there's some wording changes in it that they think would be appropriate. So then, all that comes back, the information that could then be shared with Noel and with a view to seeing if we can come up with a, a resolution that could draw...
Yeah, and in terms of just sort of, sorry, in, in terms of just the process, um, we've been working towards a, creating a stakeholder list and the Steering Committee has looked at parts of that. And then, the idea is that Bruce and the Steering Committee would help, um, engage all council members in, in sort of being assigned constituents and stakeholders to reach out to and this would be the type of thing you could take with you when you were connecting with folks.
The deadline segment, what, somehow?
An example for, for you, uh, we met last week, I think you were still out of town, but we met last week with, uh, Dana Dawson from Sound Cities with Councilman percent and just sort of initial touch base on it and said, yeah, we might be able to do something with this. So, you guys would then as our liaisons to SCA, carry it forward?
Or Eastside, or Eastside, or...
All the groups that we might want to...
Not a view of this?
No, I was gonna say that, I was gonna say what, uh, Rich said, that, wow, this'll be really helpful for Sound Cities Association in particular. I know we've had lots of conversations, beginnings of conversations with different regional partners about, about tolling and, um, and about this, moving in this sort of direction and there seems to be, you know, beginning of traction. So having something kind of written and that we can really respond to will be very important.
Debbie?
Yeah, just, just a quick comment. Um, I think it's really important that we use this as coalition building because I think as everybody has said repeatedly, it can't be just about Mercer Island. So we need to have something that I think outlines in particular our position regarding EA versus the EIS. It's, it's an important tool in the proverbial toolkit. It doesn't stand alone and it doesn't stand in isolation, but when you combine this along with discussions and some potential other content that we can be putting together that actually describes more broadly what the tolling process or potential process is, I think it, it gives them something actionable. I think that's what a lot of people have asked for is, what is the call to action? I think this makes a good start.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I mean, I can, uh, I, I don't need a thumbs up from the council on, on dictating what bullets are talking points that I talked to my fellow, uh, brethren on the outside and other councils. What we need, and I think it was Senator Horn kind of insinuated, what we need is, and this is, this does, a resolution directs no one. I think that's the word that you use, that we don't wanna direct anybody to do anything. We don't wanna strong arm anybody to do anything. It's not what a resolution does. A resolution, it, it, it's a, it's a position paper on where our council stands. Uh, and other councils can take and choose as they deem necessary, um, hopefully to what we show is also in, in joint interest. We, we need to, we need to be bold on this and we need to, um, actually, I'm sorry, it was, uh, Mr. Marshall who's, who said, said that about the resolution. Um, we need to, to, uh, say what our resolution is on Mercer Island. Um, and, and I have a few amendments that I wanted to make that it doesn't seem to have made the cut, uh, but beside the point, I mean, I can, happy with this. Uh, when I go to a fellow council, uh, other councils, um, it's something to say, this is the resolution that Mercer Island, uh, approved. And of course, that would be, um, paraphrased with, now, take and choose as you like and I might even suggest some other, uh, talking points, but I think it says something when Mercer Island makes a resolution and makes a stand that's, that's very, uh, uh, not in anybody's face or anything to that effect, but very, uh, committal on where we stand and the direction we want to, uh, hope that other folks, uh, consider. So, I don't see it really doing anything, uh, and i- if we're not, if we're not going to adopt, come together and adopt a resolution.
Mike, I think it's very clear where the city of Mercer Island stands and everything we've passed so far and, and what we've submitted and stayed. I don't think there should be any doubt of anyone on the city of Mercer Island or in the region or in the state where the position of Mercer Island is. This was done, it, this was brought forward, what we thought at, at your request. If it's not something you want, then we don't have to go any further with it. But if, if this is, you know, the, the whole idea was to give, we're trying to build a coalition and building a coalition starts with working together on resolutions and not saying, this is what we've done, so we want you to pass the same thing. So that, that was the idea and, um, at this point, you know, I'm, I'm happy if there, the other three members besides myself wanna go forward with this or if they don't wanna go forward with this, but I guess I'm a little surprised at your...
Well, you shouldn't be surprised. I mean, I said I wanted a resol, we, we need a resolution. Um, you know, talking points, we can ask staff and hand out some talking points and that's fine, uh, but I think we need to make the next step forward, cause there are, uh, the last resolution that we, uh, approved was made four years ago and things have changed significantly. I mean, I've changed significantly on what I is, what I am concentrating on. I'm concentrating on, on the EIS, getting an EIS. That, um, our last resolution does, I don't even think they even addressed it in the EIS. EIS right now is the close-in target and, um, yeah.
This is a resolution asking the state to do an EIS. I think it is perfectly appropriate to, um, circulate this among our other cities and our colleagues, to ask them to join in on this and, um, and as a starting point and so that we can all sign off to the same document and get their input. I think it's, it's quite, I anticipate that it's a very easy thing to approve of for those other communities, but I don't, I won't speak to them. So, I don't know what we're arguing about. I'd like to just see a thumbs up on going forward with this.
Mike, I was just, I was just gonna comment. This is actually a resolution saying that we, we're sort of suggesting not just an EIS, but an EIS on a system-wide tolling program. That's a big deal. That's not just gonna go real easily. You have to let people sort of warm up to the idea because it's not just about tolling on Mercer Island, it's about tolling the entire regional system. And I think it's the kind of notion that, uh, certainly can happen, but it's gonna happen because people, uh, in a safe moment start thinking about it and looking at a, a much bigger picture. Um, and frankly, I, I tend to agree, start with just introducing the concept in a very non-threatening, non-pushing way and then let the coalition sort of coalesce. Uh, I, I, Mike, I think this is one that's gonna be done with a great deal of tact and diplomacy and it's not one you're going to, uh, get people racing to the, their diets to approve.
Well, that's right up my alley there, Mr. City Manager.
So unless, unless, Connor?
I guess what, the, the only thing, if I may, Mr. Mayor, the only thing, uh, at, for the EIS, uh, time isn't necessarily on our side because the legis, we need to get that EIS, uh, uh, by the time the legislature adjourns, which is April, May.
That's, that's your opinion, okay. Connor, Debbie, any?
Yeah, no, I was just gonna say, I'm a little bit surprised, um, Councilmember Sarah with your, with your kind of go it alone, uh, kind of commitment to let's pass this now and move forward and, and tell people what we say and, you know, other cities be damned. I mean, the idea that we've talked about is we need to build coalitions and we don't build coalitions by saying, this is our opinion and whether you like it or not, this is our opinion and you can change it or not and, but we don't care, this is our opinion. We need to bring people along with us. And that's the idea of not passing this right now, but bringing people along. If there are words that, and other ideas that people wanna, um, amend so that it's more palatable to their community, um, then we need to be able to figure out what is gonna work for the most communities so that we can go to Olympia, we can go to Wash Dot, we can go everywhere with a unified voice. We're gonna have much more power having a unified voice, a unified policy than saying, you know, this is where we stand, um, regardless of what anybody else thinks. So I think this is a really important first step to be able to have something that we're starting to work from so that we can build this big coalition in the entire region. That is the only way we're gonna get this, um, beaten. We just say, um, this is what we want, this is what we think. There's three people who can listen to us and those are the people who are gonna, who are our representatives. Um, we need to build coalitions so that there's more voices in Olympia who are actually voting, um, and I think this is an important first step.
Debbie, you have any comments?
Um, just, just two quick points. You know, it, it's interesting because I think so many of us live this now. We live it, we eat it, we breathe it, we throw around EIS, EA, you know, a bunch of terminology that even probably three or four months ago, I wouldn't have been comfortable with. And in the discussions I've had so far, what I've realized is, is there's a general education process that goes on. And that's why I'm emphasizing that this is an important piece in, you know, a number of educational processes and, and persuasive conversations that we need to have. To several points that have been made, I think, you know, when we start jumping in and specifically calling out to people who haven't necessarily warmed up to the topic, to the specifics, to the intricacies that are taking place in a federal, state, um, and even in some cases, local levels, it becomes overwhelming and it does sort of engender a, a my goodness reaction. What I like about this is it is a conversation starter. It allows us to go and educate and have the conversation, hopefully frame the discussion in the, um, optimal way and to move forward, again, in somewhat of a non-threatening way. We also then, of course, want them to come back with the modifications that are going to fit, should there be modifications that, that will allow us to build, uh, you know, powerful set of voices. The second thing that I just wanna call and emphasize is, is one more of a process base and it's to Councilmember Siro's point. My understanding is that the EA/EIS decision will be made by Wash Dot irrespective of whether or not the legislature is in session or not. So even if they sort through all their comments, their questions, and it happens to be the middle of May and the legislature is out, they still move forward accordingly. It would be the same whether they did it before the legislature was out. So maybe, just if you could clarify for us the linkage between the decision-making on EA/EIS and the legislative session termination?
Right, you're, you're correct. The, the decision on, um, EA versus EIS is one that's almost always made by the executive branch of government, so in this case it'll be the Wash Dot, who is the CIPA, NEPA official in this case. Um, there are, there are on rare occasions, times where the legislature tries to direct one way or the other how an environmental study will proceed. Um, but generally, it's an executive decision. That's how it's teed up in this case. So, um, the, the legislature going out of session won't affect whether or not Wash Dot can make a decision, one way or the other.
Well, uh, sorry, I'm sorry, you may finish your question. Just a question on that. Um, but just like the legislature directed, um, Wash Dot to do an EA, they also can direct them to do an EIS. And I would remind you, and he does need to remind you, that we, um, have the most powerful person in the transportation, the House Representative, uh, that can, um, affect that type of decision to direct Wash Dot to do an EIS.
I'm not sure that, um, the Chair of the Transportation Committee on either chair directed that an EA be done. I think what the legislature did was pass a budget last year that funded a study of tolling on Interstate ninety and it was up to Wash Dot to decide how to do that. They chose the EA process, which is what they did on the five twenty study several years ago. I don't believe the legislature directed which process to use.
Yeah, that's correct. The original legislation just directed an environmental study. It didn't dictate which, which process path to follow.
I, I would like just to have a thumbs up or thumbs down on, on this as a talking points resolution. All in favor of just thumbs up on talking points, okay, five zero. Done. Um, any more questions of Noel?
Uh, yes, the next slide please. The public records request, refresh my memory on what you requested.
We, uh, we broadly requested all Wash Dot documents that relate to their thinking about or trying to obtain federal tolling, federal approval of tolling.
So is that back in the two thousand eight when the original request was made?
It's from then on. I, we didn't set a timeframe, so it's, it's really a broad range of any, any internal emails, any internal memos, any correspondence they've had with Federal Highways. I mean, it's, it's a broad request for all of those documents.
So, from two thousand eight to present?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, that's, uh, next slide. That's all I have.
Are there any other questions?
I just had a quick question, Noel. Um, how, um, how many islanders are requesting, uh, information from the city, uh, or how many islanders are on the, the email list, would you say?
Callie, what, where are we right now, do you think?
Um, oh, twenty-four hundred and then there's all city employees included, that's twenty-six hundred.
One of the speakers mentioned having, and I was at those town halls and wasn't, I have a little bit of a critique about those. Nevertheless, I think there would be, there would be some benefit to invite, uh, the legislature, uh, back, uh, back again to talk to us. Is there interest in going out, getting that going?
We, we can talk about it, the Steering Committee. I, I think we've said all along that, that we wanna have as much community outreach as, as possible, so I, I, nothing, I could see no reason why we wouldn't wanna have, um, our legislative representatives come back out. We, we can definitely talk to them.
Sure.
Okay, if there are no more comments, thank you. Okay, if there are no more comments, thank you, Noel.
Yep.
So move on to Agenda Bill 4814.
Good evening, Shannon Crick, Planner with the City. Um, I was here, um, on March 4th for the first reading of this, um, and this agenda bill addresses a rezone of the property located at 8473 Southeast 68th Street. Um, it is the Southern Fire Station. Um, there were no changes to the ordinance, um, that staff was directed to make at the last meeting, so, um, I would be happy to answer any questions you might have, um, or further explain the agenda bill.
Are there any questions for staff? If not, I would welcome a motion.
I move to adopt ordinance number 13C-02 to amend the zoning map in Mercer Island City Code Title 19, Appendix D, to reclassify or rezone the parcel located at 8473 Southeast 68th Street from the R-9.6 Single Family Residential Zoning Designation to the Public Institution P Zone.
Second.
Motion's been moved and seconded, any discussion?
I'd just like to say that, um, hooray, this is the first step in getting a new fire station if it's not then, so I'm really pleased that...
Second, second step. We got the money, we got the money, friends.
Well, we got the money, okay, yes. Second step, yes. That's it.
Any other discussion? It's not all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon, for doing some excellent work on this. Uh, Agenda Bill 4799, Scott, I guess you've got this one?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor and Councilmember, Scott Greenberg, Development Services Director. This is the second reading of ordinance 13C-01, which would amend the city code related to ground floor use requirements and parking in the town center. It's been several, uh, meetings since you've seen this, so I thought I'd just real quickly refresh your memory as to what this ordinance would do if adopted. Uh, so there's two different kinds of provisions relating to what's called the 60/40 provision. If what we're calling walk-off or public parking is, is not provided, then the current rules remain in place. In other words, um, on type-one streets in the town center, sixty percent of the ground, the street-level frontage would have to be used by retail, restaurant, or personal service uses. If walk-off parking is provided, then that number can drop to forty percent, which gives the applicant more flexibility. So for the other uses allowed on the ground floor, if walk-off parking is not provided, the current maximum of forty percent for hotel, motel, public facilities, offices, and services remains, and if walk-off parking is provided, then that number can increase to sixty percent. So, at council's direction, you're basically flipping the sixty and the forty, think about it that way. The other provision that, um, a year or so ago, you asked staff and the Planning Commission to look at was what's called the no-net-loss provision, no-net-loss to square footage of existing ground floor retail and restaurant when new projects come in, for example. If walk-off parking is not provided, then that provision remains, that has not changed. If walk-off parking is provided, then the no-net-loss provision would not apply. So it's an incentive for developers potentially to use the no-net-loss, I mean, the, the walk-off The new section, um, that you had us write in a few meetings ago, and we updated a little bit, has to do with the walk-off or public parking. So the way the ordinance currently reads is the public parking would apply to any new mixed-use or non-residential building. It would apply to existing developments if the existing development wanted to take advantage of the flexibility in 60/40 and no-net-loss. So there is no requirement for existing buildings to provide this walk-off parking unless they're asking for that flexibility. And I'm calling these exceptions, it's not the way they're worded in the ordinance, but I think just the way I think about them. There are certain types of uses, if they exist, that would not be subject to the requirement for walk-off parking. So for example, if there was a building in the town center that was primarily office use, then only non-office uses would have to provide the walk-off parking. So if there was an office, primarily an office building, and it had a little bit of retail on the ground floor, the walk-off parking would have to be provided for that retail use, but not for the office use. And we understood that was council's intent, was to require the walk-off parking more for retail, restaurant, and personal service uses, not offices. The other thing that came up, um, when there was a, a proposal for a hotel in the town center, was the thinking that hotels generally need some dedicated parking for their guests. So that's another exception that we, uh, wrote in the proposed ordinance, so that hotel, motel units would not have to have walk-off parking. But again, a gift shop, or restaurant, something like that, that was in the hotel or motel, they would be subject to walk-off parking. And then finally, um, in response, and this was, um, council asked for this one, in response to some comments from, uh, some building owners, many of them said, or some of them had said, that in some of their leases, they had parking reserved or allocated towards specific uses. So the idea would be if that occurred, if the lease was signed and had that provision in there prior to January 12th of this year, which was the date of your planning session, where you first directed staff to put this in the ordinance, um, then any leased dedicated stalls would be exempt from the walk-off parking. So the, the ordinance, I think, a little bit more clear than the way I try to summarize, it's a very hard thing to summarize very quickly. So if public parking, walk-off parking's provided, there's basically four standards that it has to meet. It has to be available for people to walk off the property for two hours or more, and that's the building owner's prerogative, is whether they'd like to allow three or four hours or whatever, but they can't reduce it to below two hours. They can require that, um, the, the vehicle driver and/or passenger, someone that's associated with that vehicle patronize one of the businesses on their property, so they can't just park there, walk off, and come back without patronizing the business. And again, that's an owner's prerogative to require that. Once the public parking is provided, it cannot be eliminated. So if in 2013, an existing building owner decides that they want that flexibility in the 40/60, they provide X number of walk-off parking stalls, two or three years from now, when they say, "We no longer want that flexibility," they still have to provide the walk-off parking. And then finally, um, building owners can provide public electric vehicle charging and car-share parking stalls, um, and that doesn't affect their ability to provide walk-off parking. I would, I would assume that if it's an EV parking stall, for example, cars need to charge maybe for more than two hours, um, somebody would be able to park there for more than two hours, that's what the idea is. That's my presentation, and we're asking you to adopt the ordinance tonight, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Is there any questions for Scott?
Yeah, I do have one. Um, is there a legal definition for patronizing or patronage? So we say that, um, you know, you have to patronize an onsite business, is this something that would be left open to the interpretation of the, the property owner, or is there some golden rule in terms of what that means, you have to purchase something or just walk in through the door?
I, I, I think it's more of just left up, a kind of a gray area left up to the owner to decide. And I think it's more of a management tool. So, so if, if the walk-off parking becomes a real problem, then the owner can kind of go to that level and say, "All right, we're gonna start..." They, you know, they could, for example, have, um, validation, that was the word I'm looking for. They might require somebody to go into a business and get a little ticket that they put on their car dashboard, or car dash, like you would at a pay parking, to show that they've actually patronized or gone into one of those businesses.
Any questions, Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, um, what would be the, um, success metric for this new change?
Good question. Um, I would, I would think it would be, might be something that's sort of hard to measure. I think the whole goal behind this is so that you can go into a building and not have to drive across the street to go to another business. So I think the metric might be, are we seeing increased foot traffic? In, in the town center, maybe less traffic, less local traffic within the town center. That's how I would define it.
Maybe one level higher, um, those, uh, who choose to exercise this option. And that would, I think it might be interesting to, to evaluate this, you know, on a continual improvement type of philosophy, maybe six months or twelve months hence, uh, to get a report back from DSG on how many folks have, uh, chose to utilize this. The council would be interested in that.
I think that any, any point the council can ask staff to come back if they want to, I mean, I don't think we have to necessarily do that at this moment. Staff will advise us if there are issues with it, or if, a year from now, one asks staff to report, and then it's something very easy to report.
But I'm certainly hoping to see not just a change in perhaps some of the, the traffic issues, local traffic issues downtown, but also coinciding with that, some of the retail spaces downtown, or, you know, the office space, just to say lowering the vacancy rate from downtown, which, to me, that's gonna be one of the ultimate signs of success. Now, it's never gonna be, you can never parse it perfectly, because I think there is the assumption that whether fast or slow the economy is starting to grow, and so hopefully it's all coming together in the next way. But that's what I'm hoping to see a year from now.
Any other questions?
I just had a quick question for Scott. On, um, uh, Do On and End Design Standards that deals with parking, parking, public parking shall be available for motorists for such time period as determined by the owner, but not less than two hours. Why the two hours?
I, I think that was just a, a, something that when we met with a number of the property owners back in October, um, they had suggested maybe two hours. Also, if you look at, um, two-hour parking limit is fairly common in the town center, it just seems to be a good benchmark. I, I do know that there are several buildings in the town center that actually have three-hour parking posted.
It, it's not uncommon in lots of town centers, and I, I think for, on Mercer Island, it can be traced back, we did a parking survey and analysis, Patrick, I'm trying to think of, six, seven, eight years ago, when we set up the permit parking, um, and we, we talked in terms of two hours.
Is there any other questions before we go to a motion? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I move that we adopt ordinance number 13C-01, amending Mercer Island City Code 19.11.020 C1, and Mercer Island City Code 19.11.110 P6, to change requirements for ground floor uses and parking in the town center.
Second.
I was gonna add a little bit then. I would, I would, I would mention, well, I haven't finished. I would also instruct the staff to evaluate the policy and present findings after twelve months, um, after enactment.
May I make a suggestion? Maybe make that as a separate motion, so it isn't directly connected to an ordinance, um, because you're adopting law now, so maybe if you had a separate, uh, by motion, direction to staff to come back.
Do I have to read that whole thing? Okay, so not that last part until...
So the original motion was made and seconded, discussion?
Yeah. Two parts of what I wanted to talk about this. One, I think it's, um, when we started with this whole thing, it became, it first was the 60/40 rule, 40/60, and we kind of, I think, got to agreement on that pretty quickly, that we needed to do something to change, um, what was going on in, in the town center, and we, um, I think we got to agreement pretty quickly, so we haven't recently talked about that, and, um, and Debbie mentioned it and brought it up a little bit. And I think we've heard from people, we know town center has some vacancies, and we are working, um, we're adopting this in part to help, uh, hopefully help stimulate some new businesses and some more retail in town center. So I think that's just really important to, to bring up again and to highlight again. Um, and this parking provision was added, and I think important, we continue to hear from people in the community on both sides of the parking issue, um, whether it has to do, most recently with, um, questions around legacy project, but also on both sides of whether parking is too, is there's not enough, or there's too much, or it's restrictive, or it's, um, or not enforceable. Do people walk around, do they drive around downtown? Um, will more apartment residents be a benefit, or will it be a, um, a problem? And I think that there's a number of things that we're doing, and this is just one of those really important pieces, that we are, um, if we, as we take this step, and we have more clear signage, and more welcoming signage, and, um, we're able to do where, uh, wayfinding signage to parking, people will understand where there is parking, um, because we do have quite a bit of parking on Mercer Island, and people just might not know where it is. So I think this is a very important step, and I hope it is part of addressing a parking problem in town center.
Any other comments? If it's not, I, I will make a comment. I'm actually quite excited to see this ordinance come before the council. Um, a lot of talk has gone into this, a lot of effort by members of this council and by staff, um, and like Tana, I, I believe this can be a, a turning point for the way we approach parking in the town center, that we, we approach it finally as a community of businesses, of property owners, and of the public, and try to get to a point that residents of, of Mercer Island and people coming onto the island to shop or, or patronize local businesses actually can view our parking as a coherent, a coherent plan, where people can actually go from one business and one building to another, um, and not live in fear of being towed, or ticketed, or anything else, and not have to worry about ugly signs, um, confronting them when they are just coming to, to park in a building. So I, I, I think this is a great move forward. Um, I think it is important to note that it applies to all new developments going forward. Um, it's not a, it's not an election for new development, for all new developments, this, this requirement will be applicable. Um, I am hopeful that the property owners, existing property owners will take advantage of this, um, and even if they don't have to take advantage of it, will, will go down this road, because I, I think it makes it, I think it really shows that, that we're evolving as a community into, into something that resembles cooperation and, and, and trying to come up with a cohesive and coherent system. So I appreciate all the work of staff on this, and the Planning Commission. Katie, I, I was supposed to ask you before I made that speech, I just wanna confirm that there's no public hearing required before we take a vote on this?
Correct.
Okay, good. Okay, with that, if there's no further comments, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero. We're on a roll here, folks. Oh, I'm sorry, Tana, you had a second motion, you wanted to...
Chair. Um, I would like to move, uh, that we ask the staff to evaluate this policy and present the findings twelve minutes, twelve months, not twelve minutes, twelve months after enactment.
I second that.
Is there any discussion of the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries five zero. Agenda Bill 4815, Scott, I believe you're still on stage in this one?
I, I am, with, with the help of the city attorney, should, should you have questions for her. Uh, so this agenda bill is also a second reading. This is of ordinance 1303, approving a development agreement for legacy partners, and MI 2615, to build a mixed-use residential and commercial building in the town center. You've seen this agreement... You've seen this agreements several times. What I wanted to focus on tonight is some of the changes in the agreement. I've outlined these in the agenda bill, but focus on the changes since you last saw the agreement. The first thing, I, I've given page numbers here, so I'm going to go fairly quickly through this, because these are all in the agenda bill. At council's direction, we put in a whereas statement regarding permit timeliness on page seven. We removed the, there was a large paragraph on vesting, which essentially created a seven-year vesting period. We removed that at council's request. That was, that was on page eight of your packet. We refor, did a bit of reformatting. There were some Bs and Cs that should have been ones and twos, or vice versa, on page 10. On page 21, which is the amenity package proposed by Legacy, there was just a mathematical error on there. The terrace should be 5,900 square feet, and 5,200 square feet of that should be public. There were a couple of different numbers. And what we did is I handed that change out before the meeting, so that was already on the dais for you for that change, it's just an error. Also, on that same page, and also in, as condition number nine in the agreement, some old language crept back then relating to the multifamily, I'm sorry, the affordable housing being available for only 40 years. Our code requires that it's available for the life of the project. So we, we again changed that language for you. And then there was also language in there that said that Legacy would still be eligible for the multifamily tax exemption. As you remember, they are not eligible, so we took that sentence out. So those are the corrections that we made. And then finally, there had been a request from council about how many walk-off parking stalls would Legacy be providing, and they are proposing 58 walk-off parking stalls. So we added that into the agreement also. So before we get to questions, I, I, I understand that there are some potential amendments to this that were just handed out to you, so we're happy to answer any questions about those amendments, or, or talk about those also.
Just by way of background on the amendments, there is some, I don't know if, before we could talk to the amendments, why don't we just talk, have, if there are questions on the main presentation first?
Yes. I'm sorry, go ahead, go ahead.
Scott, I know that, again, we've, back to the parking issue, had questions on it, and in our packet, and people have been following along and reading these documents. There's language that talks about 214 to 267 parking stalls being considered. I know we had a conversation today, and you had a number that you believe you'd agree to, and I thought that would just be helpful to, to share.
Sure. Yeah, that number's 243 parking stalls. That, you know, that assumes a 209, how, it's based on 209 housing units and 11,000 square feet of commercial space. So if that commercial were to be reduced, you know, in the final analysis, they might have to provide a couple less stalls, but, but generally, it's 243 stalls. That's based on a traffic and parking study that was done by a traffic engineer, which actually looked at, for all the proposed uses in the building, hour by hour, for weekdays and weekends, when the projected parking demand would exist. So the highest parking demand time would be, I think it's between 7:00 and 8:00 PM on Saturday night. Can imagine residents are home, restaurants are hopping. That would be the most parking demand that you would have in that building, and that came out to 243 stalls. So that, that's how they got to that number.
Question, is, is 243 then something that is enshrined in the agreement, or does the agreement continue to refer to some approximation, in this case, 214 to 267?
The agreement would still have that approximation. So at the end of the day, what, what ends up happening is if, by the time, we're making some assumptions about the commercial uses, and if, it's hard to add parking once the building's built. So there may be some limitation on the types of uses and, and intensity of the uses, but we did leave the, the range in there, because until they come in and get their building permit approved, there may still be some movement on the exact type of retail and restaurant uses that they might be planning for in the building. That may actually change the parking number just a little bit.
So that'll get locked down at the time of the building permit approval?
Right.
Based on the, on the assumptions provided at that point?
Yes. And if, and, and if this project did not require a development agreement and was just going through the design commission, I would have given the same answer. It's the same process.
Scott, how does, how does it work? How does, how does, how do we know that there will be enough spaces left for retail and non-residential uses? I mean, we have 209 units, and assuming that some of them have two cars, some of them probably have zero cars, but some of them, I mean, if, if every unit that has one car, that's, that's 209. If they have guests coming over, I mean, I'm just, I'm just trying to picture this, that the Mercer Islander who drives into the parking lot and is going to patronize one of the businesses in the building, is there going to be, will the city require that there be a certain area of parking which is clearly designated as, as available for the retail and other non-residential uses? How would that work?
Retail. I think the, the short answer is no, we're not going to require that it be designated as such. They'll have that, we'll have the walk-off parking, which would also be used for that retail and restaurant usage, in addition to the, in addition to the portion of the parking that's shared with the residential.
But, well, I mean, there will, does that mean that there'll be 58, at least 58 stalls, which there'll be signage on it saying this is available to non-residents? I mean, is that, how does, I'm just trying to visualize how this, because sometimes you drive into some of the existing buildings, buildings in town center, and it's, it's confusing, because it's, he signs permit parking only, and it's, it's very confusing for, for resident, for, for non-residents of the, of the building to know where exactly they can park.
Sure. I, I, I think the best way to answer your question is to, to flip it around. They're only going to have up to 95 parking stalls reserved exclusively for resident use. So that's the, the part of the parking supply that would not be available to someone who is coming in to, to shop at one of the retail shops. All the rest of the parking in the building is shared parking, so it would be available for anybody coming in to the retail and restaurant uses.
Is that as residential parking, seconded by?
Potentially. Yeah, there's 90 stalls on a floor, so that's why I said up, up to 95 stalls be reserved. And that, that was accounted for in the traffic and, in the parking study.
I saw the gentleman from Legacy look a little bit concerned when he made that comment. Was that, was that just, was that concern I picked up, or was that?
That's how, I should say, that's how it's done at the other projects in town.
Hi, my name's Catherine Armstrong. I'm working with Legacy Partners on this project. And to try to confirm this, to, this issue, it's a, it's a rather complicated, complicated issue, but essentially, the way that the shared parking works, and I'm not a traffic expert, but, or parking expert, but there's parking that's shared at various times of the day. So as Scott mentioned, there's a peak demand at certain times for different uses. So the residential peak is later in the evening, and the peak for retail-type space, especially a restaurant, is typically in that early evening time period. So basically, those parking spaces, in, in this case, 216 to 258, I think it was, that, that is the range. And depending on the type of retail, and exactly how much retail we actually end up with, the parking demand would be in that range.
In terms of Scott's comment that only 95 would actually be-
The, the, I think that was slightly different than our understanding. So we have a, we have, the, the garage is such that you come in at the lower level, and there's three levels of parking. So most, we expect that most of the retail parking will occur on the second floor, because that's the floor that, that the retail is on. So most people then would be parking on that second level. People would have to go through the lower level to get to the second level. The third level is reserved exclusively for residential use. But we would anticipate that almost all of that demand for the walk-off parking would occur on the second level. And that's where the 58 spaces came from.
So the first level is also going to be signed for residents only?
Uh, no, it wouldn't be signed for residents only, but we would, again, anticipate that the demand, that people, people coming to use the retail and commercial spaces would most likely park on that second level, and we would anticipate that that's the parking that they would use. Right now, we don't have plans to specifically sign anything, but we, we are planning to reserve the top level for residential only.
Is it currently planned that resident, residential parking will be fee-based? So in other words, you actually have to purchase a parking permit per month?
I'd have to have, if it's okay, ask Catherine to get back up and talk about that.
So, so if residential parking is fee-based, and you see as a resident would prefer not to pay, that there are vacant spaces available for walk-off, what would actually keep you from parking in those other spaces?
Well, there's a two-hour, there would probably be a two-hour parking limit, first of all.
Enforceable at, from 11 till 6 AM? I mean, I, I guess, I guess what I'm seeing is, is then there really truly does become a burden for enforcement there to keep actually residents from parking in the walk-off designated parking places if their only other option is fee-based parking as a, as a renter?
Rich Hill Land Use Council. It's a, it would be a monthly fee. So if you have a car, you'd have a sticker, and you'd be most likely to park up on the third level. So it wouldn't be a question of going in, and if you don't want to pay a fee, you drive into the walk-off parking. You'd have a sticker.
If I don't want to pay for the month, you know, let's just say that things are tight, I, I don't know how much it costs per month to, to reserve a parking stall, a hundred bucks?
I don't know the answer to that.
Um, and for, for whatever reason you choose not to reserve that parking spot, what, what ultimately is going to keep you from parking in that walk-off space, particularly if it's not being overly-
If you have a renegade car that hasn't been registered, I, I believe it would be a condition of the lease, correct me if I'm wrong, condition of the lease that you tell the landlord, "I have one car," or "I have two cars, and I will park those." If you have a renegade car and you don't park it, then that would be in violation of the lease. Yeah?
A little bit. And just, just to clarify again, Scott, after the development agreement goes from here, it goes to the design commission, who might ask more questions about signage and things like that?
Uh, not the development agreement, the project.
The project, I mean, goes-
So the project, right, the project. And I'll, I'll take opportunity now to mention that the project was already reviewed by the design commission, at least preliminary review last Wednesday, and they did grant preliminary design approval of the project. Of course, that's subject to council approving the development agreement. And the next step would be final design approval, potentially next week, if, if the development agreement is approved tonight. And yes, they would, they will look at, they'll, it's the, it's the design commission, the city engineer, and myself that have to agree on the parking number.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, I think the reason why this is difficult to understand is because it's not presented in a- You guys still, we'll get there. It's not presented in a clear way, because we're talking about numbers and different, different elevations under different scenarios. My question is, you've got 209 units in here, and depending upon whether they're a studio, one-bedroom, or two-bedroom, we'll have between one and three units. And then it's 11,000 square foot, so on your ratio, that's going to be between 33 and 55 parking spaces. And I just don't see how your 243 is going to get there. It hasn't been presented in a clear fashion where it is. Again, you know, I'll say, you've got 200, 209 units. Assuming those units are all single studios, that's one parking spot for, per person, per, per studio, and you've got one-bedroom and two-bedroom places. And then retail, this is on the very conservative, if it was a restaurant, it would be eight to 11 slots per thousand. But I'll give the benefit of the doubt, general retail, which is three to five, which equates to between 33 and 55. So what you're saying is that the 243 is reached by 209, which is one per, one per apartment. And on the low end of the low end, which is three per thousand square foot, which is 33, so 209 plus 33 equals 240, yes, equals 243. I, I just don't see how that-
I, I don't have the formula here in front of me. It was in the parking study. And, and again, the design, the design commission has the, the role to actually look at that and decide whether there's adequate parking. So I didn't come prepared to talk about that level of detail tonight. But, but we did it, and our city engineer looked at it and, and agreed with those numbers, and felt that it was a reasonable approach.
I guess the, the frame of reference that, that's not a question, that's a statement. So I will pass on that.
Any questions? And, and I, we're going to get into discussion, but I think Scott's, what Scott is saying is, is a valid point we need to keep in mind, that our role really is not to get into the number of parking spaces. That's, that's a role that is given to staff and the design commission pursuant to the ordinances that we've already passed. As much as we may want to venture into that, that really is not what we're here to do tonight. We can, we can talk about walk-off parking and that, because that's something that is not necessarily required by the code. To actually go into the number of stalls, I would ask the council to, to refrain from that if at all possible. So for other questions on the main, on the staff-presented draft, there is a sheet in front of you with additional amendments, and I can give a little bit of background on that. There was, there were some provisions in the draft that was circulated as part of the agenda bill, which talked about, had the word vesting in it, and which, consistent with our direction at the last meeting, arguably created some confusion as to whether or not vesting was intended by this development agreement. So several of these amendments eliminate references to vesting and any other provision in the agreement, which could imply that there's a vesting element to this. There are other provisions dealing with the timing as to when the application, or when the building permit would have to be filed by the draft that's in front of you in the agenda bill, provided that it could be filed within three years after design commission had finished their work. And this now, and this amendment now provides for it being done within one year of the development agreement being adopted, subject to some caveats which are probably unlikely to occur. And there's a couple of other changes. One is, if you recall, we had this long discussion at the last meeting of, over on, on the, what is it, 27th there, the question of what, on the 70%, which was not going to be retail, what that could be used for. And there was some, there's, I think the consensus at the meeting was if they wanted to put office in there, we had no objection to that. Or if they wanted to do residential, we have no objection to that. So this just makes it clear that, that other 70% could be used for residential or office. And the- And the, um, the last comment deals with the shared parking issue and makes it clear that, um, in, at those times of day when, in fact, the assumption is that there should be more spaces available to support the non-residential uses in the building, that whatever, um, Scott or whoever is acting as code official decides that, um, the additional stalls that should be designated for non-residential uses shall in fact be available for the, the walk-off parking. So it's, it's just following through with that shared parking concept. Um, and if there are questions of that, I understand Katie is, is prepared to answer questions on, on these amendments, um, in advance of an actual motion.
And I'll just add that we have discussed this with the Legacy Group too, and so they understand that these amendments are being proposed.
Would it be appropriate for me to make a motion?
Sure.
So I move to adopt ordinance...
Quick question, I, I note the very last sentence request that Exhibit B also may be made consistent. Um, I don't find Exhibit B...
I'm sorry, and, and that's, that's my error. Exhibit B to the development agreement, that's the exhibit that Scott Greenberg was talking about, we've already made some changes to it, those were the staff changes to it, and we just wanted to be sure that there was consistency in the amendment as well as within the body of the development agreement itself.
Okay. Thank you.
Good.
Okay. So what I'm presuming is I'll go ahead and make a motion as documented here in the packet and then we will go ahead and move to amend it if we so choose. So I move to adopt ordinance number 13-03, approving a development agreement for Legacy Partners Residential LLC and MI2615LLZ to develop a mixed-use retail residential development project in the town center pursuant to RCW 36 dot 70B dot 170 and MICC 19 dot 11 dot 010C4.
Second.
So now I would like to move to amend. And I would just call out, um, based on Deputy Mayor Grouse's comments, that the intent here is to further the discussion that we had last week and tighten the development agreement further so that it's, uh, not only bringing it more closely into scope, but also ultimately ensuring that it is consistent or that Exhibit B is consistent with the full context of the, the agreement. So rather than read through the entire document, um, unless Ally would so request, I move that we amend the, uh, the agreement per the handout we've been provided.
Ally, are you okay with that?
Yeah, just not as much.
Is there a second?
Second.
First, uh, is there any discussion on the amendment? If not, all in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Now down to the main motion as amended. Any discussion on the main motion? Mike?
Hey, Mr. Mayor, well, yeah, I'm not going to, uh, vote for this for the, uh, and I'll reiterate the fourth time, I think we've had this in progress four times, so I'll just, just say another for the fourth time. So the issue that I have with this is that, uh, this deliberate body creates rules, um, and we create what I, um, characterize as a regulatory box. And it's within that regulatory box that I think we should build. Um, and why should we, um, hold to those, that regulatory box? Because that regulatory box is developed through a very deliberate and very, uh, public and transparent process where the public has the opportunity, both the public from the perspective of, uh, those who own the property, which have, uh, property rights which I very much respect, and also those who are on the outside who just have invested interests in the good of the whole island. Uh, and it's within that deliberative process, that's when we, uh, we develop that box and then I would like to see us, um, reinforce or enforce that regulatory box. Because that gives predictability and certainty, uh, both for the developer, the owners of the property, and it also gives certainty and predictability for, uh, for the other citizens, the many other citizens outside, uh, of that property. So, you know, uh, the multifamily tax exemption, you know, I'm against that. That's, that, that plays to Legacy's benefit. Uh, sometimes it plays to your benefit to work within the, within the regulatory box, sometimes it doesn't. So, um, we, we shouldn't, um, ask them or force them or pressure them to not be able to, uh, uh, qualify the multifamily tax exemption, of which I don't think I voted for, but nevertheless to be consistent. Uh, the 27th Retail Street exempting them from having retail on there, uh, would it, we're, I think we're missing an opportunity there. Would it be prime, um, real estate for a retail? No, of course it would not. Uh, would it be a challenge for access? I suppose, but, um, architects are up to it. Uh, would it create interesting niches, um, that would be affordable for those startups? I, I think it would be. I think it would be. Uh, but we're not going to require that of this project. We're going to give an exemption or develop, uh, an exemption to that requirement. Affordable housing, again, we worked hard, um, it's my understanding that Kirkland, you know, Kirkland has some places that are 50% medium, uh, median household income. And Kirkland is very much as desirable as Mercer Island, maybe even more desirable, and they're able to build projects that, uh, have affordable housing at 50%. We're asking for 60%. There's a reason why we asked for 60% when we did that deliberative process, um, a year or so back, because we have those areas at 80%. We don't have the 60% according to, I believe it was the Arch Study. Uh, we're giving an exemption or a special consideration on that. Uh, and then I have, uh, and this will be for the design commission, um, with the parking, uh, concerns with the numbers on the parking, but, uh, that's outside of our purview, but I apologize for mentioning it, I just couldn't help it.
Are there other comments? Billy?
Um, as Councilmember Sarah, I can certainly appreciate, you know, there is order and predictability that's created when we put ordinances and, and design parameters et cetera around buildings, but I think also one of the hallmarks of government is understanding that there is nothing that is perfect under all circumstances. And in this context, I look at that piece of property, um, I look at some of the unique attributes of that property, I also look at some of the conditions that we're facing in the town center, and I do feel that the, um, development agreement as it stands is, is well justified and I think is, is very well architected. Of course, there's a few things that I'm somewhat disappointed with, but that has more to do with, um, perhaps some traffic studies that took place earlier than not, and I certainly would not try to amend those during the course of this discussion. So I would encourage us, you know, to use our best judgment here and, and to look at that property and to think a little bit outside the box, look at the gives and gets because it is not just about gives, it is certainly also about gets in terms of public plazas and accessibility, et cetera, et cetera. So, um, you know, I, I also feel that regarding the affordable housing, this is a very important first step. Would we all have liked to have seen it at 60% or 50? I think, you know, for most of us, there's no doubt about that. But what I want to see is this first important step. They've taken it from 80, they've brought it to 70, we're getting closer, and I think it can serve, hopefully, um, as a template or a blueprint for some of the other developments that I'm sure are coming down the line. So I, I do think that this warrants an exceptional process, which is why we're here and feel that the, the process to date has been healthy, both in terms of that particular property, but also in terms of the council's awareness and understanding of issues that will need to be looking out forward moving forward.
Well, I, well, um, I just have a couple of comments. I'm sorry I missed the last two times that this project was discussed, but I was here for the very first time, and I, um, I've obviously been watching the council's deliberations and reading the packets of the meetings that I missed, but I will say that I really appreciate the changes that, um, came through on the project from the very beginning to now. Um, I, I see better access up to the plaza area, two staircases I really appreciate better than, more so than one, the bench seating, the low walls. Um, it's just a refined design, which I think is, is much better. And then a larger plaza area. I'm also reminded of the fact that if this building were in another block on Mercer Island, um, the, the plaza alone that Legacy has designed would allow it to go up to the five stories. Um, but it's on a unique property where, um, in a block where there's already a plaza, so our regulations say you can't have two of those plaza exemptions in the same block. I think I'm right on that. Um, so anyway, I, I appreciate the fact that we're getting, uh, some affordable housing. It's, um, it's not a lot of units, 13, um, it's not at 60%, but it is 70, and I'm really pleased that this is the first affordable housing that has gone, um, in on Mercer Island since Ellsworth House, I think, which was built in 1976.
First new construction.
New construction.
Oh, portable housing, maybe in decades.
And, um, I do not have a problem at all with, um, the idea of allowing, uh, businesses or, um, or residential along 27th on the steep street. Um, people wouldn't go shop there. Um, a funky little store, I'm sorry, it just wouldn't happen. And one, one thing that every single planner who has looked at Mercer Island over the past several decades, they have all said that one problem with Mercer Island's town center, one reason we don't have the, um, the, you know, quote unquote synergy of a lot of little, a lot of successful retail areas is that our, our shops are too spread out. And to put, to require another shop on a steep slope, it would be just a disaster and it would, would not be successful, would be my prediction. Um, so I'm, um, I'm a little concerned about traffic. I would like the city to watch what's going to be happening on 76th. Um, I counted, I think, 10 or maybe even 11, um, driveways on 76th between Southeast 24th and 27th. If you count both sides, there's like 11. And so I think for pedestrians, it's going to be tricky and we should consider a crosswalk there or something, but we can handle that. Um, so I'm just, um, I'm happy to, um, approve of this project. I'm going to vote yes.
Um, I'll just make one comment if there's no other comments. I, I think this has been a long process, I think it's been a productive one, I appreciate the work of, of Legacy and, and of the Keeler family to, to bring this project forward. I, as Jane said, it's a very difficult project, property to develop, um, and it, it will, I'm sure, turn out to be an excellent development for the city and for our community. It is, um, you know, we, we are sort of, have a very unique development in, in town center in Mercer Island, and it is, it is still happening, um, and it's something that Rich many times has, has said, that other people come to Mercer Island from other communities and look at what we're doing and, 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 and really commend us for the orderly way we have developed and the way we're, we're bringing more people into town center and ultimately will have what I think will be a thriving, um, business and retail community in town center. The only way we're ever going to succeed on that is if we, if we bring some density in, into town center, which this project is also helping us towards. And, and like both Debbie and Jane said, there's some definite public benefits that are accruing from this project, affordable housing, the public plaza, the walk-off parking, and, and so I, I see this as a, what I think will be an excellent project and, and commend staff and commend Legacy and the Keeler family and, and everyone who, who worked on this. Um, do we have a motion as amended? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries four to one. Congratulations. Next agenda bill, 481, you want to take? I guess we're going to take a break. Word from our sponsor. Five minutes, so let's stay back here at, uh, nine o'clock. We are back in session. We're on agenda bill four, eight, one, nine. No, you did anything besides I ninety?
Oh yeah, I do it all. I do it all, yes.
Deputy City Manager is...
Yeah, Noel Tree, Deputy City Manager. I'm here to present what I hope you see as good news and a fairly straightforward issue, and that is seeking authorization to move ahead with final sale of the First Hill property. I don't have a PowerPoint presentation, but just quickly, as you will recall, in 2009 the property was declared surplus. The city planned to sell it, but shortly thereafter, the real estate market collapsed and the decision was made to hold on to the property until things improved. We have since hired a real estate firm after competitive process. We hired Caldwell Banker, the Island Branch. They put the property on the market. Bids came in on March ninth. There were five bids. The asking price, I think, was one point six million, but the highest bid actually came in at one point nine million, which was actually much more than any of us actually anticipated. So a very good return. The winning bidder, as you might recall, one of the things we were interested in was LEED Silver Certification for construction on this site. We didn't have any of the proposers promise to do LEED. We had a couple say they'd look into it, but we did have a number of them commit to do Build Green Three Star. I think the reason for that is what we've since learned is that LEED is not actually used very much for residential properties. While LEED has developed criteria for residential properties, it really has been very rarely used. And instead, at least in this region, builders use the Built Green system, which was developed jointly between Keene County and St. Holmes County and the Master Builders Association. The winning bidder is also committed to save as many trees as possible and work with us on a mitigation plan for any trees they have to remove. Also in front of you, in addition to the resolution to approve the sale, is an appropriation, authorization for a hundred thousand dollars that covers our payment of fees, taxes, the appraisal and the survey that were necessary to close the sale. So, any questions?
Questions for staff?
Yes. It's not specific pertaining to the sale, but just a question of when we'll actually be discussing basically the eight hundred and twenty-five thousand additional dollars.
I think, you know, as the agenda bill mentions, the Finance Director is looking at that money to satisfy what the debt that is going to be coming due to Seattle Public Utilities over the water meter that didn't work. That issue's still under negotiation. I don't think we know when it's going to be resolved, so I'm not exactly sure on the exact timing. Rich, I don't know if you know anymore.
No, I think Chip has simply laid out his most immediate needs and he'll bring that to you as soon as possible, whenever the bill comes due from SPU. Any dollars beyond that that might be allocated to something else, I think his plan would be to bring that to you at the mid-biennial budget, which would be just November. So try and hold off the feeding frenzy before, so that we know where we are mid-biennial.
Yeah, I think you all know this, but just...
Yes, but there are certainly utility capital projects that it could go to. And then, of course, you and/or the Utility Board may want to have a discussion about rates. It can affect the rates.
So several months out.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that we pass Resolution Number fourteen sixty-four authorizing sell of a city water utility property located at two-nine-seven-six Seventy-Fourth Avenue, southeast Mercer Island, Washington to J. Mark Homes LLC at a price of one million nine hundred thousand.
The, okay, are there any discussion in the motion before I mention as a question? The, there's nothing in the motion talking about the building standards or the agreement to preserve trees. Is that, you're just telling us that's in the offer?
If you recall, the council chose not to do any covenants or anything to, because there was a concern that that might limit the value of property. The purchase and sale agreement does have language in there regarding, again, I can't remember quite how it's phrased, regarding they'll build to those Built Green standards to Build Green system. That's in the purchase and sale agreement itself.
And the trees as well, yes.
And the trees.
We don't need to include that in the resolution?
Correct. Just to clarify, did they have a covenant on the deed opening?
Not a covenant. The council never adopted a covenant. A covenant would actually arrive with the property itself. What you directed us to seek that from bidding potential buyers and then it just becomes an element in the purchase and sale agreement. It becomes a condition of the sale. And that's what Katie just said, it will, those things will show up in the sale agreement. And if they decide they don't want to do these things, then we won't sign it.
Any other discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Is there a second motion you'd like to make, Mike?
Somebody else like the spotlight?
It's all yours.
All right, well, okay. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that we appropriate one hundred thousand from the sale price to cover the cost of selling the property located at two-nine-seven-six Seventy-Fourth Avenue, southeast Mercer Island, Washington.
Is there a second? Motion been made and seconded. Any discussion?
I just had a question about the sixteen thousand eight hundred. It seems like a pretty specific number. What kinds of costs go into that that would not be the other costs and fees of a transaction like this?
Build it up to get through a hundred thousand dollars.
Well...
We don't do that. I don't pay. The, I don't know, Noel, can you answer it?
Yeah. Appropriate up to a hundred thousand dollars.
As I recall, there were some costs incurred in terms of preparing the property for sale. We did some landscaping. I think there are landscaping, or not landscaping, but we did some site maintenance and some other things like that. There is a, we decommissioned an underground storage tank at one point, and so I think we may have some costs associated with providing some additional records to the buyer along that line. And then I also think Chip just built in a little bit here just to cover any contingencies that might come up before closing.
He's only going to pay based on invoices he gets from these various areas. So if it, bills don't add up to a hundred thousand, we won't spend it.
Thank you.
Right.
Any other discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries five zero. That concludes regular business. Other business, council member absences beyond those listed?
I move to excuse Mike Grady from...
First, are there any, are there any...
Sorry, Mike Grady.
Before you do that, are there any other council member absences other than those? I guess I'm the only one listed from May twentieth. Anything else? Anyone else? Okay. So now...
I move that we excuse Mike Grady from listening tonight.
You can do both.
And Mayor Bruce Bassett.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Planning schedule?
All I can tell you is it's a continual piece of work, work in progress. As you can see, at our next meeting, we have already listed six regular business items and then meet with the school district and then on April twenty-second, another meeting with four regular business and a study session. And then you start looking out, May sixth, May twentieth, June third. Every meeting is completely full or over full until July. So we can't do some of these. I'm going to have to readjust as I've done again and I'll keep reminding you, try to get through your meetings as efficiently as possible because some of this work is backing up. I do want to sit down with the mayor, deputy mayor, when they're both in town and talk about some items that we might be able to push to 2014. And we'll bring that back to the whole council for you to discuss before it happens, but some adjustments will need to be made.
I'd also ask you, Rich, to do one of your calendar doodles or whatever they're called, regarding the possibility of additional meeting in April or May.
I will, I will. And I, but I will caution, you don't know what impact that has on the staff. It really beats up the staff. We just, to go back-to-back, one week to the next, we just did it, what, we did it about two weeks ago, Ally? And it's, behind the scenes, it's a push. If we do it, we can't do it over and over again. And the time to do it is on the month for five Mondays, because there's literally an extra week in there that you can work with. I think what's most important isn't the number of meetings, it's your work plan. It's just, we need to only handle as much work as we can get done. So, I don't want to sound the alarm too loud, I just want you to know we're going to do some things here to make a couple of adjustments. On April eighth, as you can see, there are six regular business items. Most of them, we believe, are pretty straightforward, low time, you know, not real big media issues. So we've listed them, you know, the I ninety tolling report, another fifteen-minute report, and then everything else is a half hour or less. If you can stick to those kinds of timeframes, we can make this work. You can normally get about two and a half hours, maybe three hours worth of work done in a night before you all start, you know, the meeting starts to go through. Pretty right, so...
Why don't, why don't, for example, on April eighth, you do the Arts Council and Planning Commission as a study session? Just, we don't need to have those as part of regular business?
If I might, Arts Council staff had also suggested just putting it on the consent calendar, mostly because the chair just usually comes and reads the report that's in the packet. So they'd be happy to do that if you would like that.
Either that and then putting Planning Commission on a study session? I mean, it just, these are not, these are not media issues.
No, they're not.
So I think it would, I mean, we can approve the Planning Commission work program and part of the regular meeting, but, I mean, to me, to be honest with you, other than Chip's report, the April eighth meeting was pretty light. And in the city manager selection process, we need to do that, but I don't expect, honestly, that's going to take a huge amount of time to talk about the process.
That's exactly what my instincts are and I'm not always right about that. Sometimes I like to talk.
You all will ask a question, I just know.
So, just, we'll keep you in the loop and Dan, you and Bruce, I can sit down and talk about it.
I think there's more potential on, particularly since we've got several weeks now between the curb meeting and then April eighth meeting to prepare some more stuff, so...
I'm just looking through here and the first thing I see about the fire station is in November, looking at the bid, or in October, looking at the authorization to bid. Aren't there a couple things to be for that? Do you not see a final design?
You will get a final design when we get to... You will get a final design when we get to the authorization to go to bid. That's...
That's when we see the design.
That's when you'll see the design. Because we are now at the point where the architects are taking the preliminary design that you approved and said, "Go put it into construction documents." And prior to going to bid, bring it back to us. We'll see the project and have a final cost estimate of what we think this will cost, and then you say, "Okay, go to bid." That's...
I hear that that could turn into a long meeting. Is there a way to perhaps get some preview of where we're going in advance? Or would you recommend against it?
Recommend against it?
I would recommend against it. I know maybe it's counterintuitive, but at this point, what the council needs to understand is you've made the policy decisions. And it's all implementation from here. And what you risk, if you want to kind of get a sneak preview, is you'll reopen policy decisions, and you literally can't do it now because you don't have money, you don't have time.
Just to clarify, I have no interest in that. I'm just eager to get the thing done. Get it done. So, it just seemed late in the year. That was my...
Oh, okay. No, this is going as fast as we think we can do it. It could have been a little earlier. Noel and I were talking about this this afternoon, but I won't tell you how that might have happened. Well, maybe a little. I know that was really unfair. Well, you remember back when we said, "Give us $5,000, and we'll get the project manager working early"?
No, no, no. I knew that was going there also.
I have a question. We had requested, I think it was Sound Transit at minimum, to come back and speak to us. I can't remember if it was within one quarter or half year.
We had the discussion on the timing of the final design in Houston Center Roadway. So...
To me, that's another thing.
We need to get that one on there, too. And there are things... Excuse me, there are other pieces of work that are not on the planning calendar that are just routine pieces of work the staff will bring up during the year. There's usually flex in the schedule to allow that, but this year, there's not much flex left.
The other question is a doodle regarding the June meeting session. We talked about that a couple of weeks ago. I know people's calendars are starting to fill.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. Okay. I've got 10 board appointments I was going to make tonight. But I have no one to appoint, so... I was going to appoint Rich, but he said I can't do that. So... So, council member reports? Mike?
Well, I did go to the town hall. I went to both the town halls. Kind of a disappointment, I would say. And we had... And I'll share that with our representatives. I'd say a third of the folks there were definitely I-90 folks or stopped tolling on I-90. A third was MIEA folks. Good for them, letting their voice be heard. And a third were other folks with very touching stories, I might add. I don't mean to diminish their interest at all, but of the probably 12 questions at each session, only either one or two questions were allowed, selected to be based on the I-90 issue, which was a disappointment. You know, those things, those town halls are, I think, two purposes. One is to give the folks out there an opportunity to listen to what our representatives are doing, and also for our representatives to hear the issues that they're having. So... I'll share that directly with them, and hopefully they can change next time. That's one of the reasons, mind you, Mr. Mayor, that I'd like that we, as a council, invite our representatives either in a town hall format, which I think that's just really appreciated, or once again, come to the council chambers.
Yes, I went to a Arts Council meeting last Wednesday, and they've finalized the concert schedule for the Mostly Music in the Park series. There will only be six concerts this summer, not as many. They will take place on Thursday nights. So, there won't be any Sunday concerts, unfortunately, which is a budget thing. But they chose the art. It's a nice cooperation between two arts groups. Mercer Island Visual Arts League puts out the word to their members to get art that they submit to be used as the poster in all the publicity for the Mostly Music in the Park series. So, one body chooses a piece of art that's submitted by the other. So, they chose that work, and that becomes a poster. And then also the little flyers that go in with the utility bills, and it's passed around. The Public Art Committee has been involved already with working with... Attending meetings that Sound Transit has been conducting in Seattle and throughout the East Side for art that will go into the Light Rail Station. So, they will be participating in that. And Sound Transit is very active. They're going to have focus groups and try to get input from the community from Mercer Island, for example, what kind of art should go into our train station when it's put in. And the Arts Council needs new members, so anyone who's interested, please spread the word. That's it.
We had a Utility Board meeting the other night, and I learned that two of our senior members are going to be not re-upping after maybe 12 years. So, I wanted to thank David Love and Rob Sexton for their service. And if anyone's out there really eager to be on Utility Committee, look for the announcements of openings on that Utility Board, I should say. Also, I wanted to encourage people to take a look at the Luther Burbank Park fundraising. And if people are interested in buying a brick to do that and be a part of future of Mercer Island's park. And I just wanted to thank the Mercer Island firefighters who participated in the stair climb for leukemia and lymphoma, which is now becoming a cause for me. Thanks.
Just a personal apology. There is a Planning Commission meeting on Wednesday this week, which I love the members can attend. It's also the same night as this representation, but made a commitment to be. So, unfortunately, one did precede the other. The second one is, I mean, I have to say something, the deer on First Hill now have an Easter egg necklace. So, I knew it was only a matter of time, I think, before they became quite seasonal, topiaries, if that's the right word. So, it's kind of fun to see how those things evolve.
Okay, so, no further business. This meeting is adjourned.